State of the Union address, pray for the ones that aren't here. Ask you to please keep, continue our blessings in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Again, I'll call this February 5th, 2019 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. And if we can do a real call.
Gary Compton.
Here.
Roy Covert. James David.
Here.
Vivi Haney.
Here.
Shannon Mueller.
Here.
Peyton Parker. Kevin Parsley.
Here.
Ben Peters.
Here.
Dale Tyler.
Here.
I should have done that in the reverse order on there, but we do want to welcome two of our new Planning Commission members. We have Ben Peters and James David joining us, so we are glad to have you onboard and look forward to having you serve with us on this, so. And then, yeah, we're missing Peyton tonight, but we wish him well on that, so. All right. Any questions on the minutes from January?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I have a motion by Mrs. Haney. Yes.
Second.
Second by Dr. Compton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? And next item on the agenda is election of officers.
I have a request by Roy Covert who had planned on being here, but has, he says he's been involved in planning his division year beginning meetings for the past six weeks and didn't realize that it was tonight they had to have another meeting. So he is requesting or making the following recommendation. He'd like to nominate Kevin Parsley to continue in the role of chairman and Vivi Haney to continue in the role of secretary. He's not making a recommendation for a vice chairman at this point. He can't make that nomination while he's not here, so if somebody else wants to pick that up and make a nomination for a vice chairman, then we can move forward.
I'd like to nominate Roy Covert, even though he's not here.
That's what happens when you miss a meeting, you get, so that would make a slate of officers with Kevin Parsley as the chairman, Roy Covert as the vice chairman, and Vivi Haney as the secretary.
So moved.
So we have a second by, well, we have a motion by Dr. Compton.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Mueller.
Compton?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Passes seven zero. Appreciate it. And next item on here, we have amendment to the Springdale Code of Ordinance, Chapter 130 to amend Article 5 Use Unit and Article 6 District Regulations to Add Food Court Trucks, presented by Patsy Christie.
Okay, we've been, we've been talking about this for quite some time. I've got a couple of more amendments that have been brought to our attention that we might want to talk about. One question was the hours of operation. We're saying it may only operate between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. on weekdays and from 8:00 to 11:00 on weekends. The question was raised, is a, is a Friday a weekday or a weekend date? So, because Friday is usually a day that we, that things say open late, so do we want to change this to say 8:00 to 10:00 on Sunday through Thursday and 8:00 to 11:00 on Friday and Saturdays? Or some combination like that? That was one of the suggestions that was made, because Friday evenings is usually, goes a little later, so. The other section to be addressed is in the restrooms. We say at least one restroom for each gender shall be provided within 500 feet from each mobile food vending unit. Question was asked about whether those had to be handicapped accessible restrooms or not, and can it be with a agreement with an adjacent property owner? To be able to say that it's okay if they use their restroom facilities rather than having to actually build some or put some on site. Since this is a conditional use, it allows to address those issues on an individual basis, so, you know, we could address those. I think handicapped accessible probably is something we want to make sure that happens. But, you know, whether or not it is ones that are built with a food truck court or an adjacent building, I think we can handle that with an adjacent, I mean, with, as a conditional use. The next sections is, we've had some conversations with building inspection and with the water department on the water requirements and the wastewater treatment requirements on site. And you have a handout sheet that has those two things changed. What, they are proposing to change on water requirements that the food trucks can be connected to the public water system or be self-contained. If they're self-contained, they have to include all necessary holding and sanitary provisions in accordance with the Arkansas Department of Health and local plumbing codes, that, that hasn't changed. If food trucks when connected to the public water system shall be in accordance with Arkansas Department of Health Regulations, City Plumbing Code and City Water Code, underground piping shall be installed per plumbing code requirement and be inspected by the city of Springdale Building Department. Each individual or common metering shall be allowed, either, I'm sorry, individual or common metering shall be allowed. However, no sub-metering shall be allowed. So you can, the food truck can't, food truck manager can't sub-meter it out to individual trucks. All connections shall be in accordance with the Arkansas Department of Health Regulations, City Plumbing Code and City Water Code use as it relates to backflow prevention. Black, backflow preventers shall be reduced pressure, principal devices adequately sized to meet plumbing demands. These devices shall be protected to prevent freezing and be located above finish grade in accordance with regulatory requirements. Detailed plans and specifications developed by a registered professional engineer in the state of Arkansas shall be required for approval prior to any connection to the public water or wastewater system. So that, that's the changes to the water requirements. The changes to the wastewater requirements indicate that food trucks can be, can be connected to the public sanitary sewer system or be self-contained. If they are self-contained, food trucks shall include all necessary holding and sanitary provisions in accordance with the Arkansas Department of Health Regulations, City Plumbing Code and City Sewer Code. Operators must provide proof and approved method of disposal of liquid waste generated. A record of disposal must be kept for inspection and disposal at an unapproved site is strictly prohibited. Food trucks when connected to the Arkansas sanitary sewer system shall be in accordance with the Arkansas Department of Health Regulations, City Plumbing Code and City Sewer Code. Each food truck shall have a sewer, a sanitary sewer connection. Before any connection is allowed to the sanitary sewer system, the food truck must be connected to the public water system in accordance with the requirements herein. Mainline sanitary sewer extension in accordance with the latest revision of the city specifications for the construction of water and sewer facilities as adopted by the City Water and Sewer Commission shall be required for all points of connection to the public sanitary sewer system. All food trucks when connected to the public sanitary sewer system must include an adequately sized and construct, constructed grease interceptor. All food trucks when connected to the public sanitary sewer system shall provide proof of a service contract to a proper, properly operated and maintained grease interceptors. Minimum requirements for connection to the public sanitary sewer system shall include a mainline extension, discharge manhole, grease interceptor, proper venting of connections, sanitary sewer plumbing traps and temporary connection point as described in the latest revision of the construction of water and sewer facilities as adopted by the City Water and Sewer Commission. When food trucks are disconnected from the sanitary sewer system, all connection points must be locked to prevent opening or disposal of other sources. Sanitary sewer pump stations are strictly prohibited. Only approved connections are allowed. Detailed plans and specifications developed by a registered professional engineer in the state of Arkansas shall be required for approved prior to connection to the public water or wastewater system. And all variances requests must be approved by the City Springdale Water and Sewer Commission. So any deviations or variations to that would have to go to Springdale Water and Sewer. Those were the major changes. Everything else is pretty much standard. There was some discussion about whether or not the access needs to be paved or can it be a gravel surface rather than hard surface? I'm not recommending we make any changes of that. At this time, I think we can address those when we get into individual conditional use applications and look at those on a, on a regular basis with those. That's the only other thing that I have unless somebody has some questions of the changes that we've discussed recently.
So, I heard you say as far as hours of operations, Sunday through Thursday, 8:00 to 10:00. Friday, Saturday, 8:00 to 11:00.
That, that's one proposal, yes. Question is, should Sunday be a weekday or a weekend day?
Sure.
And that's, I put it in a weekday of being Sunday through Thursday.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, it's to the commission.
So, is this a motion?
A motion.
To move it?
Yeah, it would be a motion to recommend it to city council.
Okay.
With or without the proposals I just read to you.
And I, I would say with the proposals that you've read, and I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Mrs. Haney and a second by Mr. Peters. And this is with the hours of operations that were described, Sunday through Thursday, 8:00 to 10:00. Friday, Saturday, 8:00 to 11:00. And then the restroom facilities handled based off of being a conditional use in that one, okay?
And the water and sewer changes as I read those too.
What about the handicap access?
I didn't propose any changes. I left it as, as it has to be a paved surface.
No, his question is about handicap.
Oh, the handicap, I'm sorry, the handicap. I would say we need handicapped accessible bathrooms too. That would be my recommendation. If they're making arrangements for them, they need to be handicapped accessible.
I, I just want to add in relation to the handicap restrooms, they have to be in compliance with federal law regardless of what our city ordinance is.
I'll just put that in there so there's no question.
You have to be ADA compliant.
Yeah, I'll just put that comment as ADA compliant.
I'll amend the motion to include the ADA.
Okay. So motion by Mrs. Haney and a second by Mr. Peters.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Passes seven zero. Glad to finally have that in place.
Yes, we'll get it to council hopefully next week to, yeah, we, we got to figure out a little terminology in how we amend the ordinance, but we'll try to get it to council next Tuesday, we hope.
Okay. Before I keep going on here, there's a couple of things that we are not going to hear tonight, either that they are withdrawn per applicant or tabled by staff. And I'll just read through those real quick if, if anyone is here for some of these. So, under the tabled items section, there was B-19-02 Paula Irwin Reconcilable Trust, 5062 Valhalla Street, that's been withdrawn per applicant. We have a rezoning by Armando Carrillo, 2300 Turner, that's been tabled per staff. That's our 19-06. Conditional use Gala Bird, west of 4784 North Thompson, that's been withdrawn per applicant, see 1901. We have Final Platte, Ramsey Place subdivision, Northwest Corner Ball and West County Line Roads, that's been tabled per staff. And then the last one is Brittonum Construction, W-18-25, 3325 Butterfly Avenue. That was a request in payment in lieu of for sidewalk, that's been tabled per applicant till our March meeting on that. So, if you were here for some of those, those will not be heard this evening on it. So going back to tabled items, we have L-18-37 Bible Missionary Church, 210 West County Line Roads. Also has a variance, B-19-03, variance for deviation to detention requirement and deviation of commercial design standards presented by Gray Rock.
Good evening, I'm Mandy Bunsen, here with Gray Rock tonight, representing the church. I do have representatives of, of the church that may actually be able to answer some of your questions better than I. But I know that we needed to address the variances and one was to remove the sidewalk requirement from the street sidewalk to the building, it's part of the commercial design standards. The street improvements, which included the sidewalk that parallels the street, were actually waived at previous meetings. So this sidewalk would connect to a, the sidewalk we're asking for a variance for would connect to an, I don't know if I'm going to call it an imaginary, but a sidewalk that wasn't going to be built to begin with. So I, I think that it's a bookkeeping kind of situation unless there's something else that, that the commission has concern with. The other was for detention, a waiver for detention. Drainage report was created. Basically, the site's very small and I think you guys have seen it enough to know somewhat the scope of it. The church is proposing to construct a parsonage behind the existing structure that's been there for a while. And as part of that project has been required to upgrade the parking facilities as well as the driveway. I looked at the drainage, we've got a .6 CFS increase in a hundred-year storm. It's less than 1% of the overall drainage basin that goes down to the crossing under the highway, Spring Creek. It doesn't seem like a major concern, the engineering department hasn't had the same opinion there. I think that, I'm not sure what they've said in any reports or what there may be there, but I'm here to answer any questions with it. I don't have any concerns with it, I feel like it's a very small increase. If a detention pond is required, we can work on that. One concern I've had is that we're going to be introducing a point discharge where there has not been one historically and that's usually an impediment, or the adjacent property owner sees it that way and can be. Can be, can cause more erosion and that sort of thing. So, that's part of the justification, the overall size of the site, the overall amount of increase, especially given the large drainage basin that it's a part of. And I think that's all I really have to say about that, but I can answer any questions. But am I, is the large scale being considered too, Patsy, am I, okay?
What we're looking at is the large scale itself.
Okay. All right, well.
Staff comments?
We still need a unified lighting plan.
Okay.
For the, for the entire site, we have not received one of those as of yet. The offsite road improvements were approved at council. We also had a comment that the ground-mounted or building-mounted equipment, mechanical utilities, banks of meters have to be screened from public view with landscaping. I don't think the plans addressed that. She did indicate the request to not do the continuous pedestrian walkway from the site down to a location where a sidewalk would be. And I, it's my understanding that they agreed to put in two benches so we don't have that variance for, for those kinds of things.
That's my understanding too.
Okay. We're down to the deviation of, and, and the, the request says for a deviation of the detention requirement. When this church was built, it was in the county, there was nothing done about drainage at the time the church was built, correct? So there's no detention on the site anywhere for the existing building and the parking lot that has had a gravel parking lot for several many years, correct?
Several years, that's correct, oh, that's correct.
And they're adding a parsonage to it, and so you're asking for a total waiver of the detention requirement, not just a deviation from it, but a waiver of it, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, we need someone from the engineering department to address this issue to the Planning Commission on this waiver of detention.
Well, on this project, I do understand that there is a very small increase post development, big discharge, but, I mean, with the ordinance, we have to have detention. And I did speak with Brad on this, so I did try to work with him a little bit, just to kind of see what we could do on that. But I spoke with Brad and he was pretty firm on detention on this project.
Okay, so you're, you're saying that engineering does not support a waiver of detention on this site?
Correct.
At this point, okay. So that puts us back in a position where there's going to have to be some kind of detention submitted before this plan can move forward then? Is that what you're saying?
I'm sure we'll be able to work with them through the process.
The question becomes, does the Planning Commission feel comfortable with moving this forward when we do not have that detention aspect of it worked out? And, but you guys still.
A waiver's not granted, right?
Right, you, you still have to, to take a, a position on the waiver of the detention completely. I guess if you approve it, then we're ready to go. Engineering is recommending not to waive or require detention of the site.
Is there a downstream situation that the increase is going to damage that you're aware of? Or is this just the book says, so therefore we might, we should detain?
Well, for this specific site, as you can see, drains to the north. And on the other side of this fence in the subdivision, there's a swell that goes through there. Drains to the west and then turns to the north and goes through two more subdivisions. And then as it goes west through the last subdivision, it goes south to County Line Road and it just drains on the side of the road right there.
Are there any known, are there any known flooding conditions downstream or?
Not that I know of.
So when you say, when you can say you worked with them, I mean, what are, what are some of the options?
Well, as long as they can find, I'm not going to design the project for them.
I understand.
But as long as they can find some way to mitigate the minimal increase in discharge, I mean, as long as it's advised by the ordinance, then that's what they can do.
Does that drawing right there, what you're reporting to Aaron, what is that L-shaped structure I think it's supposed to be?
I, I can't, I can't read it. That's these.
Well, I'm actually good at talking when I'm not supposed to, but that, that is a detention pond. There, it is a possibility to fit one there. Again, our concerns were introducing the point discharge, but I, I don't have any doubt we can work out meeting the ordinance if that's exactly what we have to do.
Okay, but you want the commission to vote first on whether or not detention can be waived?
That sounds like it's the right order.
If the Planning Commission doesn't grant the waiver or the variance to that requirement, then you have to move forward with designing detention in there.
I, I don't have any doubt we can do that if necessary. It's just it was a very minimal increase and we wanted to refuse.
What you're adding to this project, but I think the point we're making is there wasn't any, anything to address the drainage issue when the church was built originally.
That's correct, and the parking lot has been what I would consider impervious for a number of years already. So it's a very small increase. But the house is about the size of the church, so it's a, it's a small, very small property.
It's about the same size as the church, then that means we're putting double billing on the site than we were before.
That's correct, that's correct. And there is an increase and we provided the report, it's just .6 CFS in a hundred-year storm, it's fairly inconsequential. But we understand if we had to follow the rules, you have to follow the rules. And I know the church wants to move forward because they've had some delays, so.
Do you know the square footage of the proposed parsonage?
It's 2,400 square feet, I believe. You guys correct me if I'm wrong too, because I kind of stepped.
I was going to say, it's not 2,400, it's 19 and then it has a garage? Yeah, okay.
So, can I ask engineering on the, on the previous parking lot, that's draining some water now, right?
Say it again?
Well, I mean, what, what I'm hearing is she, she has said that it already is impervious and that paving it is not going to make a difference. And I kind of question that, what is?
Yeah, I wouldn't count as totally impervious space.
Okay, okay. So, so the paving is adding and we're paving at least a quarter of the lot? Well, maybe a fifth. And, and then we've got the parsonage plus the other that has never had.
Did you have any other comments from staff? Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
So right now, we have the variances listed together, which it would be the detention, instead of a deviation, it's really they're asking for a waiver of the detention requirements. And then the other is the commercial design standards, which is sidewalk connection from that to the.
Am I correct to say the sidewalk was not waived, it was a payment in lieu of?
You all agree, you agreed to do payment in lieu of sidewalk on that project? No, it was all waived. Right. Different project that we got payment in lieu of, not this one. Well, I had that on my note, that you were willing to make payment in lieu of improvements for the sidewalk and not do the street improvements, because there is sidewalk to the, to the west of this piece of property.
Right, that's what I thought ended up. And, and so, so then I have to say that being that it's a church and you have congregations coming in and you have places they can go to, both if they live nearby and just to go to visit businesses, buy a pack of gum, whatever, if they're there for extended hours, there may be people walking. And I would think it would be better to have that planned for now because you're not going to be able to come back and do it later when the sidewalk goes in and have that sidewalk in the plan, at least going out to where the parking lot is. Have that walkway. Just for safety reasons alone.
The question is, do we want to do those two variances together or do we want to separate them?
Rather separate them.
I need to make sure I understand, so what we're talking about, the variance is from the front door to the public street? That's not the one along the street, that's been handled before, okay?
One from the front door, the, the, commercial design standards require that there be an established sidewalk.
And that's where the benches are going to be?
Sorry?
Is that where the benches are going to be?
Do, do we have a location for where the benches? I, I know they said they'd agree to put two on there, I don't know that we, we have those cited on the plan. That's usually something we kind of work out after they get, unless, maybe you know, if you pick some sites. Aaron, do you know of any site locations for those two amenities?
No, Dirk was working with us because we, it was such an easy requirement to me. The church was like, yeah, we'll just go ahead and take care of it. I don't know if you saw, I pulled up the resolution, it was a payment in lieu of for the sidewalk and it was a waiver of the other street improvement, so.
Saw that when you pulled it up.
So I think if we have a plan that a sidewalk eventually is going to be there and you're going to have benches or something out there, I think having the sidewalk to that, a walkway that we know is in the plan.
But this would be a sidewalk from?
Yeah, it's the internal.
Parsonage to the street.
Right, so you have to internally connect the site from the sidewalk.
So roughly where we're talking about.
It would just be from the edge of the building there. Usually we actually, where the sidewalk would normally run across the right of way, they would tie it in and that's where we have that change of materials where it actually shows where the pedestrian walkway is different from the parking lot. And that would run all the way to the building. It can vary in where they put it. Debbie, I'm trying not to get you in the eye here. Just somewhere in there usually, I mean, but they, it's up to the design of the site really, so depends on how, how they want to do it.
This would not be for the existing structure, this would be for the one in the back?
No, this would primarily be for the existing structure, yeah.
Okay, that's where I was getting confused.
Yeah, no, I don't think it'd be reasonable to do it all the way to the back, it'd be too much, yeah.
Okay.
And it, it creates that change in, in materials across the parking lot, so you know where the pedestrian access is across the parking lot.
Yeah, if they had to do it right now, because it's an open drainage ditch in the front, it's a pretty sharp transition from the road to the actual lay of the land and where the parking lot would start. So you would have just a change of materials kind of going across the parking lot, going to nowhere. So that's why when Dirk originally presented it to us, he's like, if I can get the waiver for the street improvements or the payment in lieu of for the sidewalk, he's like, does it make sense to get a commercial design standard moving, you know, deviation moving that, so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question for Mandy. The, the .6 CFS that you talked about, what, what year event is that?
Hundred year.
For the hundred year?
Yes.
Okay, so, I've, I've done several of these. For .6 CFS, that is within the round. For point six CFS, that is within the rounding error of the calculation. I mean, basically what I'm saying is you can't calculate it that tight and be correct. Normally you round to the nearest CFS earlier in the calculation. Essentially, I would say point six is the same as no increase. There is, there is increased impervious area, but the increase of the runoff that she calculated is essentially zero. It's point six CFS in a hundred year event. So the hundred year event is, you know, imagine the worst brainstorm you've ever lived through. That's probably what we're talking about.
Which we've had several of in the last few years.
Doesn't mean it happens every hundred years though, keep having it.
That's right, it's a 1% event, so.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my concern is that you calculated that not including the parking lot, which.
I included, it's just a, it's a different, it's an arrangement of calculations that is based on the coefficient. Even if I change the coefficient even a minor amount, the amount overall is so insignificant that I, I am, I'm in numbers that we don't normally deal with. And I have been doing this for 25 years. I didn't just, I hadn't been here recently, but I didn't just fall off the truck either, so. But I, I did consider that. And I'm not being smart looking at you, I just, I know I haven't, I haven't been in front of you guys in a long time. Some new faces, some faces that I'm surprised are sitting at this table. But anyway, no, but I did consider that. And we had, basically we had to like square off the parking lot because it's sort of been something that's come up, just a pattern over time. I'm sure they repaved over time and grass has grown, they've re-gravelled over time. And it's, it's pretty much impervious when you've got gravel down for 20 years and people are parking on it. It doesn't, it's not really seeping in. And our soil's not, not really happy to be called pervious anyway, so. When you've got gravel over fat clay for 20 years, it's not going that far. I totally respect the decision of engineering and I understand where they're coming from. You have to have rules and, but.
You calculate the building itself too?
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely, and considered everything. It's just the overall increase in perviousness based on, and the thing about it, you have to look at the scope. I mean, I've done a few Walmart parking lots in my time too and we're talking about, you know, this isn't even, this is barely a drive aisle that we're parking. We're driving, you're walking across from the church to the street as well, so. It's just, it's hard when you analyze something of this size to this level to keep that in check, but. But I did consider the change.
Thank you.
Yes, my question is still just about the rationale. Engineering is still recommending that we hold to it, right? I mean, that's their, that's the way.
That's their recommendation, yes, that the variance not be granted and they have to detain.
Okay. Yeah, so if you vote no on this, then you're siding with the engineering as far as their recommendation on that, so. Okay. So we're gonna hear these separately. Let's do the deviation of detention requirements and this will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
A call for the vote by Mr. Peters.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
James?
No.
And Haney?
No.
The deviation of detention requirement passes five two. And the second, commercial design standard deviation. A call for the vote?
I'll, I'll call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mr. Peters.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
No.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Haney?
No.
Mueller?
Yes.
Five two.
Second variance passes five two. And we have large scale. Be a motion?
Make a motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Haney. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peters.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes. Large scale passes seven zero. Thank you all very much. Next item on the agenda, L-19-02 Shaw Family Park, Northwest Corner of Ball and West County Line Road. I think Jason and, from ESI and Mayor Sprouse will be presenting on this one.
Let me start and then I'll turn it, I'll turn it over to Jason in just a minute. I just wanted to, I know we've got folks here that live around the park or anxiously awaited a large scale that, and we're going to be starting pretty soon. I wanted to give just a little background. We, the design that you'll see has a few changes because we've been taking, making some adjustments for cost. The cost has come in, which is not unusual. Cost has come in a little high with our estimators, so we're going to be looking at things that we can trim back. The largest, the biggest difference you'll see is that the adult softball fields on the southeast corner are shown with the new plan as proposed future softball fields. We're going to, we're likely, I mean, we're not, we're not sure yet what all we're taking out, but we're likely that that's going to be a large expenditure that we can take out, at least in this initial build. That also allows us to reduce the parking along County Line Road on the south end of the property. I think there have been a few other things talked about, like, I don't know, Jason, you, you can tell if these are still being talked about, but I, I know there was at one time discussion about reducing four tennis courts down to three. Maybe waiting on some of the boardwalks over the water, over the water features. There are some things like that that we'll have to continue to consider as we get, to get the costs in line. We've got 19.5 million dollars of park bond money to spend. My hope was to spend about 10 million of that on this park and we're gonna, we're gonna get it there. But I don't think it's things, unless you play adult softball, I don't think it's things that are gonna be real concerning to you. And I have nothing against adult softball. I played until I was well into my 40s, so I think last year was my last year. But, but anyway, I, I, I'm just not sure the cost benefit is there to, to put lighted softball fields. If we've got to make some cuts, I think for this type of park, I think those are the, that's the best place to start for us with a, with a meaningful cut. So anyway, Jason will be here and can probably go into more detail and maybe correct anything I've said that's wrong, so.
Ten foot trail instead of eight foot?
Jason and I haven't talked about it, but we do need to make that adjustment. That's going to be an up charge, thank you, Patsy. But we.
I asked for 12 and he said he'd do 10, so.
I think the plans show eight foot trail and we're gonna try. Now, we may go from concrete to asphalt, which is fine for most people. I think most people just soon have asphalt. But we may go from concrete to asphalt, but we would like to try and get to 10 foot on the width of the trails.
Mayor said 10 foot trails.
We would like to get to the 10 foot on the.
With mayor on the, where the softball fields are, are planned, would that be, would it just be graded and?
It'll be, it'll be green space, it'll be mowed and kept just like the rest of the park. It'll be open space, yeah.
It could possibly be future, in the future, we could possibly go back to building softball.
Yeah, Dale played softball with me, so I know your concern, but.
Up till my mid 40s, yeah.
It, it can always be on the table. I just don't think we're going to be able to get the cost where we need it. We're not going to be able to put lighted softball fields there in this initial build out. It'll have to be phased in at another, at a later date if we ever do it.
Or leave the.
Yeah.
Leave it open.
We may, we may get more demand for pickleball or something, you know, who knows? But, so it, it may end up being something else, things change. But, but it'll show on your large scale that we're presenting, proposing tonight as, as proposed softball or future softball, whatever it says.
Thank you, Mayor.
The only other issue to, to address with this is the, the ponds are being designed as regional detention facilities, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and engineering is comfortable with those addressing the watershed needs as regional detention? And we just need to make sure everybody understands it's regional detention, that water will, retention, not detention. Retention means the water stays there, right? It's gonna be regional retention, not detention.
Jason, did you have any other comments?
I don't have much to add, I'll just answer any questions.
We don't have any planning comments. Do we have the elevations for the structures, did y'all have those?
I've got them. Electronically, I've got them.
Well, I think Aaron's gonna look for them. We can take comments while we're looking for those elevations if anybody.
Any questions or comments from the audience? If you'll come to the mic and state your name and address, please.
Scott Biggs, 8285 Cary Smith Road, right on the corner of Cary Smith and Ball Street. And my neighbors and I are all kind of wondering, there's, I know y'all are gonna make street improvements, putting curbing and everything in. Are we gonna be moving the mailboxes that are along the street on Cary Smith, I mean, on County Line Road? Ball Street, excuse me. There's three homes that had their mailboxes on the same side of the street that y'all are gonna be building the park. And I'm assuming they will be moved over to the other side of the street.
Mayor, if you want to address that.
We, they need to be. I don't know what the process is with them, working with the post office.
The post office determines where you put them, so we'd have to work with the post office to see if they can be moved to your side of the street. They're kind of picky about how they run their routes and where you put the post office.
There's only three houses, so they probably wouldn't matter. It wouldn't be just going down, instead of one direction, going down another.
Sounds real simple, yeah.
Yeah, I know it sounds simple. Hey, we ask questions.
It's not always that simple when we talk to the postmaster, but yeah, we can.
We will try. We will try, that'd be great. Question number two, and we were, you were talking about cutting costs and this, that and the other. Are the tennis courts, are they gonna be lit and be open at late? Are they going to like shut off at a certain point in time? Or are they gonna be just for daytime use?
I can't answer that question, so, somebody can.
Will it be timed or do you know or?
Yeah, they'll be on a push button and they'll stay on for a certain amount of time.
Okay, 'cause I'm just wondering, you know, with lights being on, if it's gonna be on at 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning and.
Well, the lights will have to be directional just for the courts themselves so that they don't.
I'm not sure how George Park, what hours of operation are. I'm sure they cut off at a certain, certain time, you know, we are.
If you're sure, it'd be timed at least at the latest 10 o'clock.
And I think one of your concerns is, is that those lights bleeding over into.
Bleeding into the homes and into your windows at night and, you know, especially that late at night.
So Jason, did you want to kind of comment on how those lights would be?
Yeah, they'll, they'll be directed at the courts.
Right.
They're not supposed to bleed off the property itself.
Yeah, we have a standard for light pollution that we all, these will.
We'll meet all the lighting requirements.
And then the lighting around the trails or ballard, or trail ballards, they're not, are they?
I think they're.
The steering lights?
A little bit, a little bit taller than ballards, ballard height, but they're still be directed down.
Are they like the ones that's going in on Dean's Trail, that height?
How tall are those, 20?
I don't know.
I think they're between 15 and 20 foot tall.
I don't know if engineering looked at the height of the poles or stuff. We didn't look at that kind of stuff, so.
Thank y'all very much. Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Teresa Kirkland and I live at 14115 Ball Road. Second house, our first house on Ball Road there, right across from your ponds. And my concern is not the park, I think it's wonderful. My concern is the fire station that's going to be there. And so I would like to hear a little bit more about that, especially noise, the position of how it's going to be turned, if there's going to be any, maybe landscaping screening or something to help with the noise. If y'all have been out in the area, you know, especially on Ball Road, it's, it's kind of country. And for a fire station, you know, that's going to be quite a bit difference for noise in that area. And so I would just like to hear a little bit more about the fire station part of it, please.
We will get a separate large scale development plan that shows how the fire station is going to be laid out. Jason, did you submit that already?
That was at this side, that was the one.
Okay, we don't have, we don't have the plans for this fire station yet.
That station will be the third one we do.
Okay, do we know?
Starting on the second station.
Okay, so in relation to when this park is going to be built, do we have a timeline? Okay, the park's gonna be built between here and here and the station's gonna be built? Like what, what's the timeline?
I would expect if things, that, that's a tough question to answer because we're building another station too and we've got to determine, and these are, these are questions the council will ultimately decide. But I, I think, I think it would be reasonable to expect the station nine, which is what that will be, will probably start either before or very shortly after the park is completed.
Okay, so it won't be done at the same time?
It won't be finished at the same time, I wouldn't expect, no.
Is this the same funding? Does the fire station go under the park funding? Okay, so it's a separate funding?
No, it was a separate ballot issue.
Okay.
And so, so the, and the streets are separate pot of money too. Streets will come out of the street bond, the park will come out of the park bond and the fire station will come out of the fire station bond.
Okay, so the way that y'all notified us for the park meeting, will we be notified about the fire station meeting also?
Yes, you will get registered letters if you are an adjacent property owner.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I didn't really plan on saying anything, but I wanted to take this opportunity. My name is Greg Taylor and I live in 2991 Willow Bend Circle in Springdale. But I just publicly wanted to say how much I appreciate the planning commission and the city council working with us and developers that we now have brought to Springdale to do a residential subdivision next to the park. And I just wanted to say that we really appreciate the effort that y'all went to to look at that. I know it's a little bit different, but from everything that we've been able to see and research, I think it's gonna be a great addition to Springdale and to the park. And so I just wanted to say publicly how much we appreciate y'all taking the effort to do that.
Thank you.
Are you afraid we don't get adult softball?
Yes. And I am a better softball player than.
Thank you, Greg.
All right, good evening. Michael Kirkland, 14115 Ball Road in Springdale. I know we've got several projects that are related. In addition to the park improvement, we're also talking about the road improvement and the fire station, which is all in the same vicinity. My question at this time is somewhat related to the park, but it's also related to the, the road project. There's some discrepancy about the name of the road. Is it Ball Street or Ball Road? According to county records, it's Ball Road from County Line North. It's Ball Street from County Line South. So that's just to throw a monkey wrench in your works here. I just wanted to throw that out there to see if there's gonna be any changes in the naming of that particular road.
I see ordinance, because it runs north and south, it should be street.
Okay, so you're, so you're changing the name of the road?
I didn't say we were changing the name. I'm just telling you what the ordinance is and I think that's something we probably need to.
I think Elm Springs would be a part of that conversation too.
Yeah, county, county records indicate that it's Ball Road, but.
Well, it was in the county, it was Ball Road.
Correct.
We don't necessarily all change those to be street, just to meet the, because we have Randall Woby Road, we have, you know, all of those, so I don't know that there's any action being taken unless you guys want it changed.
I'm, I'm just, I'm asking, that's, that's my.
Sometimes, sometimes we just use those names. Like I get onto Patsy all the time for saying in the street and it's in the avenue.
I know, I see what you're talking about.
So sometimes we just do that.
Sometimes we just use the wrong name.
If we can all agree with Elm Springs on something, I don't care what we call it.
That's the only question I have.
You like the name Ball, it doesn't matter what the prefix is, right? Okay, okay.
Any other questions or comments? To the commission?
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Have a motion by Mrs. Haney? Have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tyler.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Shop, Family Park, Large Scale Passes, seven-zero. Finally.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, we're very excited about that, that whole development, and including the housing development as well, Greg, on that, so thank you all very much. All right, next section is rezoning, R-19-04 Ecclesia Incorporated, northwest corner of Carey Smith and Grimsley Road, from A1 to SF1, presented by Rick Hawes.
Good evening, Rick Hawes, Landmark Real Estate. I'm here to request for Ecclesia Incorporated on the northwest corner of Carey Smith and Grimsley Road to go from an A1 to an SF1.
Staff comments?
The comprehensive land use plan indicates low-density residential use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. Appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily residential should be provided based on accessibility, site seatability, utility availability. Ensure adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size.
Any questions or comments in the audience?
Low-density, yeah. Low-density, single-family.
How many?
How many? Four units per acre. That's 2.36 acres, that's the size of the tract, and it can only, and they're asking for it to go to SF1, which is a single-family, four units per acre. No more than four units per acre.
Do you have any other questions or comments? It's to the commission.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Compton?
No.
David?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Rezoning passes six-one.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 26th.
That'd be great, thank you, Patsy. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, R-19-05 DH McJunkin Produce Incorporated, forty-five-seventy-nine West Sunset, from C5 to C2, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jason Apple with ESI. This project is located just east of Wendy's Restaurant, Highway 412. We're requesting a variance, or a rezoning from C5 to C2, to allow a drive-through car wash on this property.
The reason it has to go from C5 to C2, because the driving car wash is not allowed in C5, so it has to come down to C2. And the staff memo in your packet had a problem. Debbie and I had a communication error in this one. The comprehensive land, oh, you wanna ask for comments before I do this?
Staff comments, that's fine.
Sorry, I wanna make sure that got corrected before, y'all may have wondered what happened to me on this one.
You're on a roll, keep going.
Yeah. The land use plan indicates regional commercial use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies as recommended for approval. Improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations, assure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and in proper locations. Encourage the development of a wide range of commercial development for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood community and regional centers. And you should have a corrected staff report on, on the table tonight.
Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rezoning passes seven-zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 26th.
Let's see, conditional use, C-19-02, and forgive me if I pronounce the last name wrong, Michael Vilcos, parcel number eighteen dash zero-two-eight-one-nine dash zero-zero-zero, tandem lot split, tandem lot split, presented by Michael Vilcos.
Good evening. What we're trying to do, we own around fourteen point ninety-eight acres, so we have like three hundred feet on the front. So what we're planning to do is do two acres on the front, and then we wanna build in the back. We're gonna have the two lots on the front, they're gonna have access from the street, and we're gonna have, we're not, we're trying to do a driveway, that way we have access to the house, and we're gonna build in the back, and that's what we're trying to do.
Staff comments?
The reason we have this is because it's in our planning area, and that's the reason for the conditional use. I don't think we have any concerns. Aaron, am I missing anything? I mean, he's done everything we've asked him to, and he's creating lots of adequate size to do this, too.
Okay, any, three lots, right?
Two, two.
Two frontage and the one in the back, which is a large lot, I'm not...
Any questions or comments from the audience? If you'll come to the mic and state your name and address, please.
Charles Martin, I'm at fifty-nine forty, I think it shows fifty-eight forty on the plat that I'd saw there, but I'm at fifty-nine forty. I agree, I don't see a lot of issues. Understand, like Patsy said, that this is in the planning area. I was just, more than anything, kinda wanting to be clear on a little bit of the size of how it was being split up, and from the other, I wasn't clear. So I think he said an acre each on the front was what I was hearing there. I guess the other, which should allow for some decent-sized homes, that's, that was kind of our concern. I know it's a tandem lot split, and it's more just in the planning area, but experience has taught me, having been in Springdale and seeing the growth, and, you know, this very well could be part of the city someday, so just need to make sure and consider that, and, and Patsy had said everything looked like had been handled correctly. The other thing that I've seen happen in that area out there, there has been traditionally some mobile homes or trailer houses that's been done, and I just wanted to make sure that we weren't doing anything to open that up, was one of the concerns I had, because I know the city, as it grows, that area probably would not wanna see that.
That we don't have any way to keep it...
So, and I understand that. I just wanted to make those comments, I guess, for the record, and I had met Michael, and certainly don't have anything negative to say there, so that's all I had, I believe.
Great, thank you so much.
He gets to address the split of the property, not whether or not he can put mobile homes out there.
Yes, and I do understand that, so.
Any other questions or comments? It's to the commission.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Conditional use passes seven-zero. All right, next section, Large Scale Developments, L-19-03 Meyer Brothers Construction, forty-six seventy-nine West Sunset. We also have a variance, nineteen-zero-nine, variance for deviation of commercial design standards, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jason Apple with ESI. This is the same property we just rezoned from C5, or C2 to C5, planning a drive-through car wash at this location. Our variance of commercial design standards is specific to the frontage landscaping requirement on the, along the, the front of the building. We've taken, taken those plannings, moving, moved them elsewhere on the site. That is the request for the variance, and I'll answer any other questions.
Staff comments?
Basically, you're doing the same amount of landscaping, you're just not putting it adjacent to the building, correct?
Correct, yes.
Right.
Staff comments?
We do need, our comments from other utility companies have to be addressed. We need a unified lighting plan. I don't know if we have one of those or not. And you have to have two of the following benches, patio seating areas, I'm assuming you're gonna add both of those.
I think we added the, the bench areas on the latest plan. Looks like they're on the sidewalk, along the frontage.
Okay, so we got those. I don't, is there any comments from engineering? We, we have standard comments in there, is anything engineering-wise, are they detaining on this side, and if so, are we okay with, with this one?
I think on this side, they replaced most of the impervious areas already there, so there wasn't an increase in peak development flow.
So we're saying they don't have to do detention on this side?
Is that road a public street, or is that a private road?
Right now, it's a private drive, right?
The, the new road? I believe we're showing right-of-way as a public road.
Then does the turnaround meet the standards for...
Yes.
Fire department?
I met with Dwayne this morning.
Okay.
This plan does not, but we've adjusted that since.
Okay, so you're, you're showing dedication of right-of-way, and you're meeting fire department requirements for the turnaround needed at the end. And this is probably gonna be temporary, we hope.
Yeah, I mean, the intent is to, for that, that road to continue further south, if we can find another secondary entrance.
The biggest challenge on this piece of property is that secondary entrance. Depending on what you put back there to meet the fire code and other things, there's just not one access point on 412. We don't know what traffic is on 412, it's terrible. But they're just asking for this one corner right now, not the rest of the property to be developed.
That's it? Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission.
For the landscaping requirements. So, so the foundation landscaping is just being moved out, but it's the same amount? Okay, I'll make a call for the vote on the variance.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Variance passes seven-zero. Do you have a motion for the large scale?
Motion, motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Haney. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Mueller.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes. Large scale passes seven-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Where Mike's car, fireworks stand used to go?
Uh, yeah.
Wonder where he's gonna go now? All right. All right, next section, Board of Adjustments, B-19-05 Barth Day, 303 Indian Trail, variance to allow portable carport on-site, presented by Barth Day.
Yes, thank you. My name is Barth Day, 303 Indian Trail. What I'm requesting is you to allow where my carport is to stay. It's been there for three years now. City came out two years ago, looked at it, said I didn't need to permit. Somebody, I guess, had complained that it didn't meet code, and by the code, I can read the code for you, it says for portable structures may not exceed one-hundred-and-twenty square feet, or they shall have to meet the location of a permanent structure. Well, mine is ten by twenty-five, which means it's over one-hundred-and-twenty square feet, and the location for permanent structure is located to the rear two-thirds of a lot, but it, limitations now shall not apply to a carport, garage, provided that the requirement front yard is observed. I believe I do meet that. If you look also at Google, how my lot is, it's basically impossible for me to put it in the backyard, since my yard's a wedge. So that's what I'm requesting a variance for, is I can't put it in the back two-thirds.
Well, basically, you're asking for requests for it to be too large to be a portable structure, right? You said it's more than...
Right, it is.
It's too large for that.
Right, it's around two-hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred-and-eighty square feet.
Okay, so it's, it's not really technically a portable structure?
Correct.
But you wanna keep it on, at that location where it is now?
Correct, right where it is now. What, what's inside of it's my boat, as you could see through the picture a while ago, and it wouldn't really be feasible to put it, try to even put it in the backyard. I'd be making ruts in the yard, you know, just to try to get it out to go fishing.
I think we had two emails on this, correct, or letters?
Do you want me to read those in, into the record?
I would, I, yeah, I would go ahead and read them into the record.
Okay, the first one is, this letter is to request a variance for a portable carport not be granted to the residents of 303 Indian Trail. Although our neighborhood is, is one of the older subdivisions, the residents strive to maintain their properties, to actively improve them, we do not believe a portable carport will be an improvement to the area. As far as we can ascertain, there are no other portable carports in the neighborhood. We like, not, not like to see a precedent set. This property, property in question is in the direct line of sight with the below signees. We urge you not to grant this variance. Thank you for consideration, and it's signed by three adjacent property owners. The other email came in this afternoon, and it says, "We respectfully, we respect everyone's individual property rights, however, we are concerned about our own property rights. We feel that the variance should not be allowed for the portable carport on the property at 303 Indian Way. We feel that the temporary structure is unsightly, and it should not be there. It is the first thing that you see when coming into our neighborhood, and not in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration." And y'all should have copies of both of those, and they will be inserted into the minutes as well.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission.
I, I just wanna make the comment that, I mean, I understand that it doesn't fit perhaps in your backyard, for whatever reason, but then, if we allow this, we're basically saying anybody that comes out here, his property doesn't fit what they wanna put on there, we're gonna allow.
Correct.
And if that happens all across the city...
The other issue is, I can tarp it, but I guarantee you the tarp on that's gonna look a lot worse than the portable carport.
I mean, that, you know, that's the reason there's storage units that lease for boat storage and for RVs and things like that. Anyway, that's, that's my comment.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
How much space? I, I drove past, and so there's a fence right on the northeast side of your house?
Right, the, my back privacy fence?
Right.
Yes.
So that looked long enough for a gate to be in there. Is there a pinch point beyond that?
This is how my yard is.
Can I see that? So from the corner of the house to the, to the fence, or to your property line, is too narrow? What is that dimension?
Oh, yeah, that's only about ten feet.
Ten feet.
Yeah, if you'll come up to the mic and state your name and address, please.
Debbie Day, I'm his wife. So you were asking about the privacy fence, so I have a question. If we were, can we bring the privacy fence up towards the front of the house, closer to the, where the canopy ends? I mean, what's the ordinance? If we were to bring it into the, to incorporate the side yard, 'cause it's at the side, the privacy fence up...
Do you know that?
Well, anything that's considered to be in the front yard can't be any taller than three feet. From the front edge of your house, onward the street, can't be any taller than three feet.
Okay, so this is the side of the house?
Right.
And if it ended three feet before the...
No, the height of the fence in anything in the front yard can't be any taller than three feet, but from the front edge of the house back, it can be a standard privacy fence, if you can park it bef, behind the front edge of the house.
It is parked behind the front edge of the house.
So if we were to, to bring the, try to bring the privacy fence up to, to incorporate the side yard.
Well, doesn't, uh, the structure itself is too large for a portable building to be in that location. If the structure went away and you parked your boat behind the privacy fence, it would be different. But putting the privacy fence up doesn't help the situation as far as the size of your portable building and the fact that it has to be in the.
Right. Can I read one more thing here? Where it says shall not exceed one hundred and twenty square feet or the requirement shall meet of a permanent structure. So if you go up to permanent structure located at the rear two-thirds of a lot, that limitation shall not apply to carports and garages, provided that the requirement front yard is observed. And it does do that.
Mike, you guys want to help or Sarah, you want to help on this one? Sarah's still here?
If he doesn't think that it's in violation right now, um, then he's welcome to argue that in the district court here. It's a city ordinance violation that he would probably be sided with if he left it as is. Otherwise, he has the request on the table and so he either is requesting the variance or he isn't. Does that make sense?
I'm not sure there's much I can add to what Ms. Sarah said, but just to kind of clarify a couple of things from a building standpoint. Of course, as you all know, the zoning requires it to be eight foot from side property line in SF one to these zones to the beginning of a structure. It also requires by this ordinance, if we consider it to be a portable structure, it'd be ten foot from any of the structure on this property, which means it couldn't be where it's at now. From a fire code standpoint, it has to be a minimum of five foot from any of the structure, which is going to be a fire rated material. Truly, the building code doesn't get into tents or canvas materials a whole lot. That would be more of a fire code thing. Temporary tents on fire codes. But truly by right, as we've interpreted the ordinance previously, it couldn't be where it is. But it would be a matter of how you determined it, portable, permanent, and of course, as Sarah had said.
So the question is, do you want this variance request to continue as you've presented it, or do you want to discuss this in district court?
I'd like to continue.
Okay. Okay, so your variance is to allow this portable structure at that site, I mean, at that size to like, to remain where it is on the site?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The portable structure, size of the portable structure makes it us consider it as a permanent structure?
Correct.
Meet the setbacks as a portable structure? Side set, setback for the portable, for a permanent structure?
Mike, didn't you just say it doesn't meet the side setback where it is be, and the distance between the building and the?
I can.
A, as we consider to be a permanent structure because of the size, it doesn't meet the setback requirements?
It's.
As I, as I say, yes, ma'am.
It sets eight feet from the house.
Does meet it, okay.
Which I can move it two more feet to the left, which I can make the ten feet.
I, is there a way to make the structure itself smaller and be, be considered?
No, ma'am, my boat touches the very back and the front.
Okay, this be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote?
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney. And this is a variance to allow the portable carport on side.
Tyler?
No.
Compton?
No.
David?
No.
Haney?
No.
Mueller?
No.
Parsley?
No.
Peters?
No.
The variance does not pass seven zero.
Thank you.
Variances cannot be appealed to the city council. Your recourse is through circuit court. You have thirty days to appeal that, that decision. Uh, and then after that thirty day period, the structure has to be removed?
Thank you. Next item, B nineteen dash zero six Marcy Chavez LLC, twenty-one seventy-two North Thompson, variance for deviation of frontage requirement in a C six zone from a hundred to eighty-five feet, presented by Greg Taylor.
I need to start this discussion on this one because when the rezoning request came in to rezon this property from I one to C six.
I one.
I missed the requirement that it had to have a hundred foot of frontage. Because if I'd have picked that up at the time, the variance would have been included at that time. So the property went through the, the whole process, got rezoned to, uh, C six, and now they're here coming back asking for that variance from a hundred feet to eighty-five feet. That doesn't make, I mean, it's just, I will know that again. That's one of the reasons why the other rezoning on Turner Street got tabled because the C five zone also has that hundred foot minimum frontage and they are coming back to ask for the variance and stuff at the, at the same time. I have been back through my notes trying to figure out why we got, or where we got that hundred foot mini, minimum, and I'm not really sure I know why. I know on the C six because it's auto sales and auto related, we talked about needing that extra space so that when we put it up. The C five, I'm not really sure about. So basically I'm saying that's why that fifteen foot variance request is here because I missed it last time.
The open display district, we, we thought it needed to be a hundred feet to be able to put anything out front and be able to drive past it.
And I think that's the case, but I couldn't figure out why it was a hundred feet because if it's the distance between two drives, it takes a hundred and fifty feet. So you still can't have two drives, you can only have one. I'll keep looking, but I have not got anything. I think that's one of the things we need to go back and, and look at to see if that's still something we want to, to make sure we, we continue with that. If we continue with it, it will, will notice from now on. He won't get to you and tell you they have a hundred foot of frontage, so. But this one is that request to rezone it to, I mean, to give a variance of fifteen feet. Greg, you have anything to add to that one?
No.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
You know, on, on this one, I think if I had, and I'm, I, I think I voted for that before, but had I known it was not in keeping with, I would have voted no. So I would be more in favor of, instead of making a decision, tabling it till we can look at what the reasons are. Because otherwise I think we're opening up a door for the, for everything else.
We don't have a large scale development plan for this piece of property or non-large scale yet anyway, so.
She is, it's my understanding she's leasing the property.
This is probably up to Greg as far as if you're, do we want to table this or?
You want the commission to go ahead and vote on it as is, or are you willing to let it be tabled for us to give us a little bit more time to look into?
Well, I, I don't know what her, I don't know, I, I don't know what her situation is with her tenant. If he's, how close they are to him occupying the building and using it for.
Well, there's no paved area on there to park cars on, so you can't park cars on there now.
I don't, I don't have the answer to that. I just.
We haven't seen a large scale or non-large scale for it that I know. I know they've cut some of the trees down. Is there a structure on it too?
There is a structure on it. They were, they have been cleaning it up, she said. They, they have been working on getting it cleaned up.
Mike, have you seen any, uh, building permit or modification renovation to convert it to a commercial use? Seen anything, any of that stuff? Do you want the, the variance request voted on?
If it's, if it's voted on and turned down, what?
There's nothing that says I can't come back and reapply.
So there's not, that's not one that.
Not a, there's not a waiting period. Conditional uses, you can't reapply for, for a year. They could modify it, uh, you know.
I guess for me, I'm just, for me, I'm just a little confused as it's on C six, so.
But it doesn't meet the minimum lot requirement. As the ordinance says, in a C six zone, you got to have a minimum frontage of, of a hundred feet.
So if you don't approve it, what happens?
It's still on C six, they just can't build anything on it because it's a non-conforming lot. That's where we got a problem. We, we need to address this and.
What commercial zones would fit this?
A C two zone, it can go into a C two zone right now, but you can't put it. A, a car dealership is a.
Well, it was, it was originally zoned I one, I believe.
An automobile sells as a conditional use in a C two.
And it's surrounded by C six.
The property to the south is C six. Property to the north is still industrial where the produce place is. It hasn't gotten.
I mean, if you table it, I don't, I don't know what options. I mean, it's either one way or the other. The way I see it, I don't see how it can be any other way. It's either C six and you can use it or it's, you're not, you can't use it and it doesn't matter if it's C six, if you can't use it. So I, I don't, I don't guess I follow the reasoning of what choice that she would have if you table it and we come back. We're still.
The only choice would be, do we change, is there a possibility of changing the minimum frontage on a C six lot to something other than a hundred feet? It says there shall be a minimum lot area of fourteen thousand square feet. In addition, there should be a lot width of not less than a hundred feet.
Well, you're probably running issues as far as, don't you have to have two entrances and it has to be two locations to enter that property?
No, it doesn't have to. You couldn't at a hundred foot.
Uh, wow, yeah. So you're, you're wanting us to go forward with this one?
The variance request is on the table unless.
Let's be a call for the vote.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, let's go ahead and vote.
Okay.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Compton?
Yes.
David?
No.
Haney?
No.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
No.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Passes four three.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Well, now the next one before.
Next item, B nineteen dash zero seven LD Gibson Properties LLC, six fifteen North Kansas, variance for deviation of front setback from thirty feet to ten feet, presented by Larry Gibson.
My name's Larry Gibson, twenty-six hundred Truett Lane. Um, I apologize for having to come back for you again. When I was, when one of my friends was here presenting for me because I was unavoidably, unavoidably detained the first of December, um, fourth of December, I believe actually it was. Um, we should have been asking for the deviate, the variance from the amount of square footage required in order to get a duplex on this lot and asking for a side setback. The friend that I had that did the present, the presenting is also the guy that's drawing our plans for us. And he thought that the side, the setbacks on the front and the side, since we're, since we're turning this property to face Walnut Street instead of as it previously was before we had the house and this, then the, and the garage raised. He thought that it was eight foot, feet on one side and thirty feet on one, on the other side, instead of thirty and thirty on side and front. Anyway, um, uh, the case is, is that we just, we just can't build the, the depth of a, of a building there. We'd, we'd have to build an extremely narrow, extremely long in order to accomplish, uh, the building that we want to put there. Which by the way, will be a considerable improvement to what the property has been for the last eighty years, so.
Staff comment?
So the structure will be shifted thirty feet from Walnut, correct?
We're asking from a, for a variance from thirty feet to ten feet, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and the, the structure will face Kansas?
Walnut.
Okay, so you're actually asking for that front setback in front of the duplex to be reduced to?
Yes, ma'am.
Where are you going to park cars?
In the garage, on the driveway?
Okay, so you will have a ten foot from the front of the duplex to the, to the street and you'll have a car parked in the, in the garage and then one more car parked in the driveway? Will it overhang the, the sidewalk?
Depends on how big a car it is. I, I don't, I don't, Patsy, I can't answer that.
That, that's the question because when you're putting it that close to the, to the street, where are you going to put parking? That, that's my concern.
Understand. Um, there's some property at the corner of Christian and, and Pleasant. And I know that setback off of Christian, it faces, those two duplexes face Christian Street and.
They're thirty feet back, aren't they?
No, ma'am.
What are they?
I don't, I haven't taken a tape out there, but I know they're not thirty feet back. And they're certainly not thirty feet back off of Christian, I mean, Pleasant.
Could you do it twenty feet off of Walnut and have it twenty feet from the right of way to the front?
I might could do fifteen, but twenty won't work.
And get you the eight foot, you have to be eight foot from the, from.
The back property, yes, ma'am. We own the back prop, the back property now too, six eleven.
This is putting a really poor pressure to have a vehicle. And, and we can say that people are going to park in the garage. We can say people are going to park in the garage, but that doesn't always happen.
I agree. No one knows better than I that garages are most often used for storage, that's right.
Are they single car garages or double?
They will be singly, yes, ma'am.
So if they have two cars, you've got one sitting in the garage and one sitting in that ten foot space that's out to the street. That's what you're asking for.
Well, he's, he just said that he could do fifteen.
That's a little better.
I can do fifty. I'll accept fifty.
Are you, are you meeting the setback off Kansas?
Yes.
Thirty feet off Kansas?
Yes, sir.
Could you put parking on that end? On one of them at least? Or both of them?
Say it again.
With the parking for the duplex off of Kansas Street where you got thirty feet? But that doesn't get you into the, into the garage?
No, ma'am, no, um.
This.
I, I don't, I don't know what this, I don't know what the, the requirements are for green space on, in that, in that thirty feet. I, we've cut all the trees down that were on the lot now. They're, most of them are laying on the ground, but they're, they're not there anymore. But, um, you know, I'd have to break the sidewalk there, certainly. Of course, I would, you know, I would, I would accept an opportunity not to have to put that sidewalk there, but.
You're not asking that question, are you? You're not asking for sidewalk barriers, are you?
No, I'm not asking that question right now, no.
When you, when you came in December, the request was to go from ten thou, the required size of the lot was ten thousand five hundred and you asked to go to nine thousand thirty-five?
Yes, ma'am.
The question I asked was if, will you, because that, that concerned me that the lot was too small to put a duplex.
Mm-hmm.
And the question I asked was, you can do that without variances, and the answer was yes, so.
I didn't.
So I understand you weren't there, but I would not have voted if, if to do that, you required that much of a variance. I would have not agreed to that. And the question, and the question was brought up. So, you know, for whatever reason, whoever you sent was asked.
Didn't speak accurate, yeah, right.
So, so now I do have a problem with going to the setback and leaving us with a problem with driveway si, size and.
Do I need to amend this and come back again and ask for fifteen instead of ten, or can we change that tonight?
We can change it to fifteen tonight. Cause it's less of a variance than what you.
Let's change it to fifteen.
Can we go to nineteen? Go to twenty?
Seventeen?
We really don't want to get into, uh, foot at a time. I'm just trying to keep people from parking on the sidewalk.
I, I understand, I understand, I understand. I've, I've had great success at another property that I own in another city in the area that keeps people from parking in the street, keeps people from parking in the yard. And, you know, I can't give you a hundred percent assurance, but I, I can write it, I can write things in the lease that will keep people from, from doing those kind of things or will tow their vehicles off. We've done it in another municipality in Northwest Arkansas for the last three years.
Okay, so your revised request is from thirty to fifteen?
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions or comments from the audience? Mike?
Sorry.
One quick clarification. We are going to require four exterior parking spots, two for each side. Is that correct, Ms. Patsy? And there'll be two nine by nineteen spots for each side.
Doesn't work.
Parking space standard is nine by nine, nine foot by nineteen.
So you're not going to have.
You're not going to have that with.
Without crossing the sidewalk, that's my question.
That's why I said twenty feet.
Or is there something else?
Not, not counting the garage.
Correct.
Four spots. Outside.
Outside.
But it would require a twenty foot setback?
Not fifteen.
Or nineteen?
For two family, there's two spaces for each dwelling unit outside the primary structure or garage. or garage. Maximum allowed paved surface areas can't exceed forty percent of the total area of the front yard.
I understand. Thank you.
Currently meet the rear setback?
Yes. The eight-
What if you moved the duplex back and asked for a variance for the rear?
Get into a fire code issue. Is five foot the closest they could be from that park? So he could gain three feet from the back?
Well, he owns six eleven. He could redraw the property line.
The problem with that, ma'am, is that six eleven sits very near, in fact, it almost sits over the property line. There's a, there's a detached garage behind six eleven and I think it's on the property line. But I'll take that five feet on the back, or three, or whatever it is.
We're kinda planning, let's make a deal here. So maybe we need to table this and let you go back and look and see what you can make work on this.
Okay. What, what are you, what, okay. If I have to table it, am I, am I, are we off of this till March?
Yes.
You tell me what you'll take and I'll make it work.
We're back to twenty feet?
Twenty.
You wanna revise your request from thirty to twenty?
Thirty to twenty.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
So twenty feet garage starts, right? And then if there's any cars parked in the driveway, there's twenty-ish feet and the average car length is about fifteen feet. So my quick Google search says, so should have a little bit of clearance there.
He's gotta have two spaces. So he'll have to have pavement for two spaces-
Wide?
That are nine by nineteen in front of each of the duplexes because that's what's required.
Aren't they-
The single car garage.
Single car garage, right?
He's gonna have to pave something beside it to get that second paved parking space.
I'd like to point out that there are recent, there is recent precedent that, that says that we have gone, we have, we, the city has granted lesser setbacks, front and side, where thirty was required to less than what I'm asking for.
Aaron?
Typically, in instances like this, we would ask for a site plan, just so you guys would know exactly what you're evaluating. The site can be developed with parking. It doesn't necessarily have to have garages in the duplex. Just, there are other alternatives. You don't have to stick to this one. We did have the dup, like the duplexes on Christian Street, but they also fronted Christian. So he came in and asked for the side setback. It would be the side exterior to be reduced to eight, which would be like what's in a normal, single-family neighborhood and some of our older neighborhoods. So that looks very similar. This one with the duplexes facing not on Kansas is a totally different orientation and it, it would look a lot different. So I think there's something, some things we could look at a site plan and work out with a site constraint. You know, it's just a little bit different of a situation than what happened on Christian. I don't know exactly what the setback reduction was on Christian. I know there was a side setback on that one. It was, he came in, if you remember, he came in and asked for twice for the reduction because he did ten at first and then couldn't get it in. He had to do eight. But that was specifically a side exterior on a double frontage lot. Now granted, double frontage lots do have that strong thirty foot on each side, so they are difficult to develop on. Most cities don't have that designation. Once you set the orientation of the house, they usually adjust it one or the other. But, yeah, little, I would recommend that we go with the site plan to see the layout first from a, from a staff perspective when we're evaluating this, just to see where the parking is. Cause he doesn't have to have garages with this development. He could have the parking to the side where the majority of the lot favors that and still have a favorable setback and normal zoning request. As he said, this does kinda set a precedence. It is his EBO a case.
Yeah, Aaron, I mean, you're advocating as far as for tabling this on, on it as well and-
Yeah.
It sounds like he's wanting to go forward with some of this. I mean, it's really up to the applicant as far as if they want to table it or not.
Right.
You guys are recommending to table so that we can look at a site plan a bit more. But, you know, if he wants us to hear this, that, that is also his right to do that. So.
What, what happens if we don't call for the vote? Tabled or?
Taking no action if there's no call for the vote.
And that means?
But it's on the table. His request is there. We really need to, if he's not gonna table it, we really need to vote on his request. He is-
Go ahead. If I, if I, if I ask to have it tabled, then, then I'm back to, I'm, we're back to March again, aren't we?
That's correct. Yes.
Well, and, and what Aaron was proposing is, is that there might be things that allows you to have something different as far as your site plan that wouldn't even probably require some of this deviation whatsoever.
I understand. I understand. And to Aaron's credit, I mean, he was, he was speaking partially, not necessarily on my behalf, but it'll certainly cost me less money to not put garages in this place, to make, make, you know, more heated and cooled square footage than putting garage. And I, I just wanted to, I had an idea of building something that would really improve that part of town. That's my, that was my intention in pushing the house and the garage down in the first place. I was making money on the house and the garage that were standing there. But, you know, I thought that this would be, I didn't think there'd be any issue with this at all. Let's table it and I'll bring you back a site plan and we'll work off of that. And likely it'll be without garages and it won't be, it won't be the property it's gonna be to start with.
Okay. Thank you. The next item on here being nineteen dash zero eight, Joshua Lawson, thirty-three sixty-two North Forty-Eight Street, variance for deviation of side setback from twenty feet to five feet in an A-one zone, presented by Joshua Lawson.
Hi, I'm not Joshua Lawson. I'm his wife, Bobby Lawson. So I'm here on behalf of him and myself. We're looking to build a thirty by forty shop on our property. So we're trying to get a variance to go from that twenty feet to the five foot. Just a couple of comments about that. We are in an agricultural zone. The five feet does butt up to my father's property, who's here tonight with me. And it is all a wooded area. So I don't feel like it's-
Okay.
Should be an issue, but I'd like to hear your comments about it.
I guess our only concern is, yes, that the property belongs to your father next door and right now he's not opposed to it being five foot from his property line. But our experiences have shown as properties change hands, the next person might not like five feet. Could you make it at least ten instead of five?
That would be difficult. That would be, that would be difficult for Joshua because he built a nice fence. At the time he built his house, he had planned on a shop and he didn't realize there was that much of a setback on my property. So if he moves it ten feet, he's gonna destroy a nice fence in the back of his house. The only thing that's out there is deer and coyotes in woods right now. And I've got cows on the rest of my property. I've got twenty-six acres around his property and I sold them those two acres to be back away from everybody. And we're in Benton County and we got annexed about seven, eight years ago. And I think it would be nice for him to have that shop, to put some of my stuff in also.
We all know we got stuff. So the, the fence, Aaron, can you point to where the fence may be on that?
Yeah.
That's where the fence is now? That's, that, where he, where that arrow is at? Is that the fence you're talking about right now that has to be taken down?
It looks like it. Yes, ma'am. It's hard to tell.
The fence is down. There's nothing but words there. There's no fence.
Well, you said his fence he put in his backyard.
We're talking about the fence between our properties. There's no fence between our properties.
He has no problem with the thirty foot setback in the back. There's a lady lives back there, but she's about a hundred, twenty feet away. And there's a-
Okay, let's, I guess I'm confused. We're getting there. Hold on.
Don't. I don't know what that is.
So the house is where, can you see the structure on there?
That's the house, right?
Yeah, where the arrow is.
And you want to build it in the northwest corner, right up there?
Correct.
Straighten on from his house, right there.
Absolutely. Dad, I don't know.
Have we, have we seen a site plan for this? Has anybody seen a site plan for this?
That's where he's. Couple of pages down, he's got where he's-
Aaron, can you bring that up?
Like page one thirty-eight? I guess, I guess my concern on it is, he has the space to put it and fit. So what kind of precedence are we setting?
That there's where he wants to put it. He's got the wood. I've got cattle over here. I'm leaving right in there. They leave it right here and it must have got the shop right there. It doesn't show his backyard, the fence, but he's got a nice fence for his dogs to run.
And daughter.
If he moves ten feet in, he's gonna have to destroy a fence if we built it. And it's gonna cost him. The only other house that's close is this one back here and a guy through the house right, right here.
Do we have any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
So you're saying if you move it, I believe, south, there's a fence that we can't see that he would have to-
He built a wood fence behind his house without knowing. He, he always planned on building a shop building beside his house, the stores and van tours and whatnot. And he didn't realize about the setback. Cause we're out there in the country, Benton County.
Well, the plaque that I'm looking at, the survey shows it was marked with a twenty foot side, setback on there. Because the drawing we show, shows that he's building over that setback, knowing that that setback was there.
Can we, we show, cause I want to make sure we're all, can we see that up here?
You know, the, the other thing is, as, as bad as it is that I understand he'd have to destroy the fence, in, in our rules, we're not supposed to be able to look at the cost of the fence.
I understand all that.
And so-
I don't really see anybody being able to build back there for many, many, many years. First of all, I don't intend to sell it. I've had the property for thirty years. And my life is, my past, my life will probably stay there.
But that's just not something that we're supposed to be considering. We're, I mean, not under the rules we follow.
Let's be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote?
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Haney?
No.
Mueller?
No.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
No.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
David?
No.
This does not pass four three.
Variance request cannot be appealed to the city council. Your recourse is to appeal through the circuit court.
But at this time, change it to ten feet?
We're asking our attorney to come in, Kate whether-
I mean, there's a variance request on the table. There is notice before the body. It's whatever you choose to do on this. I can back it up.
Want to allow him to amend his variance request to make it ten feet instead of, so it would be a ten foot variance, the setback would be at ten foot rather than twenty? I have to decide whether you wanna take an action on that.
I mean, I, I still feel like there, there's plenty of room on the acreage he has to put-
Go ahead, Sarah.
The spaces.
I'm gonna say, you don't have an obligation to vote on that request. So if he wants to reapply for something else, that may be the better course of action, but it's up to you all how you want to do it.
I would suggest if you want to reapply for a, a different variance, that you bring in a site plan that shows exactly where it is.
Okay.
Because we're kinda talking in, it's generally in this area. So if you could show it on the survey, cause you submitted a survey with it and it's just drawn in kind of a box without a real location. If you could give us a little bit more details, maybe it would-
Why is it that, and I'm a contractor myself, I'm a electrical contractor. Why is it that I'm doing houses that are eight foot apart everywhere? Garages are three or four foot from other people's property line. But out here in the country, you don't let us move within five foot of woods and, and have them build a shop. I don't understand.
Well-
You're saying it could be developing houses be put in, but yet they're gonna be eight or ten foot apart if they subdivide. So what's the problem?
Well, when you ask for five, that's less than any of the other standards. We don't have any other zoning classification that allows a side setback of five. Everything else is eight. Okay?
Or, or you could change the zone, zoning to a zoning that, but then you'd have the rules that follow that zone. It would change.
But you understand we're in agriculture zone also out here.
But the setback requirements in an agricultural zone set by ordinance is a twenty foot side. That is the requirements of an agricultural zone.
In an agriculture zone?
Yes, yes, sir. That's what the current ordinance says. You have to have two hundred foot of frontage on a public street. You have to have at least two acres and the setbacks are thirty in the front. Let me get here and do this from memory, but read it to you. It has to have two hundred foot of frontage, two acres, a thirty-five foot front, a thirty-five foot back and twenty feet on the sides. That's the, the setback requirement set by ordinance for an agricultural zone.
That's because it's all two acres or?
That's what the ordinance requires in a piece of property that is zoned A-one. When property is annexed into the city, it comes in as an A-one property. Unless the property owner comes in to ask for it to be rezoned to something else, those are the minimum requirements for a, an agricultural zone with those setbacks. Thirty-five front, thirty-five back and twenty on each side.
I thought it was, it's thirty-five in the back, thirty-five in the front and twenty foot, you say?
Twenty foot on each side, yes.
And that's for garages and shops or houses?
Any structure that's put on there has to meet the setback requirements.
Okay.
So if you want to come in and submit a new variance request for a different variance, I would suggest you bring a drawing that shows exactly what you're looking at.
I think he submitted a drawing, ma'am.
Well, the drawing that they have in their packet is a red box drawn onto a location. Can you show her what, that doesn't really give you a really good location of where it's gonna be. It does have the setbacks on it too, which is thirty-five. We're all marked on that, on that survey.
Okay, thank you.
Next item on the agenda being nineteen dash ten, Stephen Lindsey, thirty-five sixty Silent Grove Road, variance of deviation of front setback from thirty feet to twenty-eight, presented by Bates and Associates.
Good evening. Thank you. So we're, ask for a variation for deviance of front setback from thirty feet to twenty-eight feet. Mr. Lindsey's current front porch is two feet into the thirty foot setback.
This is an existing structure that's been there quite a while.
Yes, ma'am. It's actually before the, this is-
Before the subdivision.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
So what we're really asking is for a variance for the existing structure that encroaches on the setback to be reduced in that location to twenty-eight feet.
Yes.
Not the entire front setback to be reduced to twenty-eight feet.
No.
Just that section where the house actually encroaches on the setback.
Yes, ma'am.
A little bit different.
Yes, sorry.
Space built before the road improvements?
No. I mean, yes, it was. Actually, I caused this. I bought the right away for Silent Grove Road and that's what put this in violation. So it's sort of, the city sort of caused this.
And future projects that we, or the projects we do now, if we create a variance situation for them, we try to bring them in on the front end so that all gets done on the front end. This is just one of those that we didn't do at that time.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Call for the vote?
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Variance passes seven zero.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. And let's see, Springdale Municipal Hangar Expansion, sixteen seventeen Powell Streets. This is L seventeen dash thirty-one. Request for six month extension, presented by A&amp;J Construction.
Will they have their hangar under construction? Mike, is their, is their construction work started on this hangar already? Have, they, they started grading? Have they applied for a permit? Okay. Their, their approval, our scale's gonna run out before they actually start construction. It's kind of a questionable area whether or not it's gonna expire or not. So to err on the safe side, he asked for an extension for six months. And even though he's not here, I would recommend that we-
Okay. Okay.
Make actually a six-month extension.
Any questions or comments? To the commission?
And there, there's not any changes that really affect this?
I'm afraid it would expire before he gets everything under construction.
Is this a motion or a call for the vote?
This would be a motion to extend the, the time on the large scale for six months.
I'll make a motion to extend the time for six months.
Motion by Mrs. Haney?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peters.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Haney?[1713.11]